We're going to call the meeting for the Thompson Planning District Order at 7:00 PM on October the 11th, 2022. And for the purposes of the Thompson Planning District, I am Chairperson and Councilmember. And I have a great from board member this evening and. For remember the hurdle is on. I'd like to. Constable Valentine, all concept for all in favor. Doctor minutes three point one is the public hearing for by law for six. Resolution two zero two two, zero zero six, move by council, I was received by council per. Here we solve that minutes of public hearing for by law for six, step two zero two. Development plans. Tell the council, they receive all. A Monday on 27, 2022, to be adopted this year. The ministry.
Nothing.
How so? Any other comments? Question, all will be there. Three point two is a doctor minute for contemplating this particular meeting for August the 2nd, 2020. Resolution two zero two two, zero zero seven, move by Deputy Mayor Lumber, second by council approved. Fear resolve that minutes of the Thompson Planning District shall come to the council. On Monday, August 22nd, 2022, be adopted this year. And the ministry. Open that. Any other comments? See, not called for the question, all goes in there. Go into violence, four point one. Is the third reading of by law for six, dash, two zero two two, development and then at the sequel policy area. Resolution two zero two two, zero zero eight, move by Council long, second by Council. Here is all the by law for six, dash, two zero two, game of battle of the Thompson Planning District. For amended Thompson time, this problem by law number part two, dash, two zero one two. Appendix say not to be amended, read as make the nail in the policy area. It is a single policy area, be given a third inquiry and then be now passed. Mr. Ray.
Yes, so just to know that as a third reading is already gone through two games by four. It is also have the public hearing and has received a serial approval. This year, yes, or it's signed off on this by law. I mean, and I'll do the third reading. That's where it is to be the policy area from. Still adopting the same policies for the area with this new thing.
Thank you. And Mr. surprise, did you have any comment? Constable Wong.
Nothing at that legacy is developed as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other calls or comments? Deputy Mayor Lumber. Thank you. Any other conference? Coster also.
Thank you, ma'am, mayor. I just want to say that basically what they're loose referring to is a name change, a dog being somebody. I'm sure and I know that when they're ready for the development. So again, I think it's a good news story. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, definitely a good story that we've been working on for the approximately last three years. So what? Welcome the steps that are moving forward. With that, I'll call for the question, all will be there. Here. Okay, sorry, is it was a third reading, it is reported vote. A holding paper. Council through, couple of constable, you know, constable, Colver, constable, Elfrid, Deputy Mayor Lamar, Mayor Smook and Constable. We call for adjournment. That's Maryland here, Mayor Colver, in all favor, for Mary. Constable Colver.
Three, two.
Yeah.
Okay, can we all change back for? Right now, Mayor. Now get the call for order for October 11th, 2022. Seven oh five AM, conditional use number zero zero two, dash, two, two, one, twenty seven, Nelson. Supporting documents for conditional use number. Zero zero two, dash, two, two, per lot to plan two, one, one, five, eight, dash, one, twenty seven, Nelson. To allow a non-accessory parking as a conditional use within the commercial downtown to zone CDT's administration.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Council, this is a conditional use application to look forward. The applicant is a respective buyer of property. Again, non-accessory parking is allowed use within the CDT or commercial downtown. Really, this allows for no building to present the use of parking, a lot of parking. Basically, as per the memo from the inspector, non-accessory parking is developed and providing the. Clients of particular development, technical use included. As per the plan act, this conditionally used was circulated by according to part eleven. That high tech, yes, shot cable and the. And no objections were received.
Thank you. At this time, we will, I'll be looking for. A few presentations in favor of this project, if anybody is in favor, which is this project, please state your name and forward. For a second time, anybody in favor of this project, would you make a presentation on forward? And third time, anybody wanting to make a presentation in favor of this project, come forward. Now we will ask if anybody is opposed to this project, please come. Second time, anybody is opposed to this project, please come forward. Third time, anybody opposed to this project, please come forward. Thank you. See you in that. We'll call for adjournment. Constable Colver, constable group, all favor. I'd like to call the regular meeting of city council. All of the heart. No, no.
She doesn't have a coffee.
On her iPad. Are we both at fault? Think we will. Seven oh nine, we will call this meeting very. Of over seventeen thousand people at seven oh nine PM. Variation order, supporting material for variation order number one, zero, one, zero, dash, two, seven, for lot four block. Thirteen fifteen Stanford Bay for the construction of the accessible rapid, this is the side yard requirements from. Sixteen to four point two five, using the current requirements and point five B to eleven point three five feet. And reducing the requirements for parking from space, three spaces to two spaces in residential movie that's these nine. For the administration.
Good evening. So they're part of the social mass is for this variation application for the property thirteen fifteens. They have a new construction accessibility graph in front of the building. By determining accessibility, I had mentioned, there are two variations in the outside yard and a front yard, so side yard from six feet to four point two. And the front yard of twenty five feet to eleven point three five feet. Because in this program, I have discussion with another resolution, that regarding the parking, because they reduce it to eleven point three five feet. Parking spots can be by twenty. So you can't work three parking spots. Based on, we talked about going to kind of. You brought up property, which will add a lot of the part two there, they will be a little probably shorter. However, if you have a property next door that has more than three spots that can satisfy that third parking spot or facility. After the planning act, this is very short and circular, like it works with. And no objections on this very.
Thank you. With that, we will receive presentations in support of this project. Say, or state your name, sir.
Yes, many calls on the. Thank you for all this to do a presentation, it won't be, it won't be a lengthy one. But trying to keep. I do want to thank. You staff, I'll. And I need to. To work with this, it's great. Well, yeah, so I appreciate the time. Forward. In letter of August twenty six thousand, it really sums up. What we're asking for here, we improve the variation addresses the gap between standard developmental requirements. But the reality of the operations of this type of housing, as well as the additional space, supposedly address it. For the additional space, I believe. That's a. We have the running initial house. For those that are not aware of maps. There are solution beers start back in two thousand and two. We are historically a council program for a person with anger and stress issues. Focus on in the partner box. The property I enjoy by the show network is the executive director of the maps and also for the. The mission. Many of the men that we deal with have experienced toxic trauma, whereas met balls, several. Buttons. And we have issues that are fighting wars through. Back in two thousand thirteen, we were asked to look at what is to try to show housing. By both the province and the beds, we agreed because there are some of our men that we're finding. Were homeless because of some court matters. So the Phoenix House for Men was created at that time. We, we've been at operation with that for over seven years now. We have about ninety three percent success rate. In two thousand and twenty one, we were asked to give by the problems and the best we were interested in looking at. Holding up another kind of house for females. We said, yes. We want to make sure due to the high success rate of our programming. And how we have our, our house for men, we want to duplicate. Then basically. So that includes the, the accessibility. The, the people of the men have the same thing that we're putting on for the forgiveness house. Isn't important because some of our clients are going to have some. Publicity issues. We, as mentioned by, by dial. Even though based on the partners of parking, we have two parameters. The one next over again has more than, than enough, I believe we have for four. We won't post copies or just ever an issue with that for extra. Park will be addressed. And the last thing I want to point out is we're hoping that we don't have a lot of visitors that come to our house. So to say that. Due to our requirements for our clientele, very limited. That any, we do only parking, you'll find any people probably on staff. We will, we have men, men, this is. So. Here to speak on what is this, I think, in your own plans. Also, the need for foundation housing, I believe this helps to make sure our additional house runs that. The vision is possible, but we have a lot for any need for, for more than two parking stalls. So I believe that is. That's less of. You see that aspect, I should have any questions.
And here, is there any question?
Can you imagine just a clarification, number one, based on this two property, what is a parking spot buying it from the district?
Will be three each of six, as he said, for one.
So we did variation, we've been taking one away because of rent detail, or still we select six. In total, the six is after the round construction. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, mayor. My question is just, I think it will not, but for clarification purposes, we're talking about something in the wheelchair man. There was something that's about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to make presentations for this project? Very final, anyone else willing to make a. For the presentations for, I will now ask if there's any others. Anybody like to get to this part of it? Second time, would anybody like to get to this part of it? Thirty five long time, what is your objection to this? Seeing all for German, also Elspeth. Deputy Mayor Governor, all favor. Now we will move into the regular meeting of council. Seventeen PM for October the eleventh. Two thousand and twenty two, we have a couple of material on Zoom and we have regrets and comments for. I would like to recognize that we are on pretty fine land, traditional land, nature, solar, recreation. And homeland of the making and that we are all true people. I would like all for approval of the agenda. Constable Elspeth, Deputy Mayor Lumber, all favor. As we're going to the doctor minute, I want a one. It's a public hearing for variation order number one. For a story and this might be any comments. Did we have any questions to answer last time? I think.
I believe everything was answered in a meeting except for some questions for transit services, like a copy of the contract and I keep going through. I'm sorry, I think so.
Okay. Did you hear that? Colver, and because my man is willing to go over contract with you. With the individual, set up a meeting with you all. Okay, to that, thank you. Any more community comments?
I'm not at twenty eighth street, I'm going to call in the question. The transfer, transparency shown in this council by mayor and council. On the cost estimates on the new white center. Three times I asked for these numbers and three times I was told, well, council, blah, blah, blah. And apparently that's where it stands. Now, I understand how it works and that it doesn't work with a resolution in camera. It only goes to a consensus. Now, if you guys are going to push this consensus, why would it not push back when? A year ago, it was said that we're going to have a consultation, that was agreed, I can say this in this chamber. And it did not happen. It was questioned by myself. It was questioned by a counselor of all of it. And it's not happening. Now, why isn't we have a double status on this?
Answer.
Same answer, I was an administrator by, directed by, by. So it happened with all staff, you understand.
Don't believe that it's a double standard.
It definitely is.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm sure once again, the question is, a couple of days, there was a few thoughts and people were like, cool. I was wondering what they were doing there. Which days I. Thursday, Friday. I believe Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. Or you don't know what's going on.
This. So particularly. I'm on that, sir.
You have your answer. Um.
Yeah, just, I, I don't know if this is the last week, guys, for elections. It's not, it's the last of me here before elections. Generally, I do want to thank everyone for the time that they did on council. Being on council, I guess, I know he keeps you all the time. I do want to say that, that I would be, I would saw this for him. On behalf of the city and want to thank you guys for finally accept. I also want to criticize that staff as well, this is a lot of time. So. As I said, I could only be here at five until the elections, but I just wanted to give a chance to say thank you for that. And. I want to do a lot of work, running game, I want to say art, what's getting better.
Thank you very much. Any more, any comments?
Yes, good evening. My name is. CW, CSW, the safety, we. Program, our downtown core is a terrible mess. And the question that I have. People were elected four years ago to represent thirteen thousand and five hundred people in the city of Thompson. The downtown core is terrible. I, when we get rolled for a couple of days ago, and I've got trouble, we're voting for a two and eight up to anybody. In my heart. So what do I have? City council members. Are being involved in a committee outside of Cambridge during the week on a regular basis. Sit down and discuss and my ways of meeting of dealing with the station downtown. And where are we going to go with our downtown? Soaring Center is great, a soaring center is not going to solve the problem. You got to have an interview. You got to have a police, and you got to be a little bit involved. And I have a question, why is there a meeting that made you regularly to deal with this terrible issue we have downtown?
There is a community organization, advisor committee that does, there's an overarching of twenty organizations that are equal. And as well, there's activities that were under that, it must say he plans a lot here. So it takes a plan for the next five years, but it's very easy work on. In terms of discussion, the whole safety council has committed the whole every second week. It directly helps us discuss. Any changes?
Only got to read to three to us. So to your response, I attended the city. Meeting, maybe help me to put a book, stable, easy, public, take me. You know, this. As a home citizen, Thompson there, that was not part of the organization. I only see one counselor there, class management, so maybe more community. Emails or more posters or work, whatever, be mutated on that problem that there is a component of it. Right now, I want to know how many, how much is the councilors involved with the original organizations? On dealing with the projects. And you guys meet regularly, I don't know about that. I just know what they're thinking on, but you got to meet with that average little port of community that meets.
I also had a meeting with the original core, also part of our, often heard of an original strategy. I'm really ready with KTC, what I feel. Um, yeah, I mean, that's there for a while, but there are three that they need are one. Either the council, or the mayor's directly, or the administration. Those are ongoing, a number of indigenous organizations are also part of the council, involved, state. So they sit on the board as well, as a number of reports that seem involved.
Any more comments?
Please, I forgot to mention at the end, will the mayor today give the cost estimates for the new aquatic center?
No, could base a moment, we're discussing in camera. Good one. Any more comments? See, now we will move into the adoption of this. I have what is the hearing for variation order number one, zero, nine, dash, two. Resolutions, literal, could to one, seven, six, what else are else, where's the second meeting, mayor? Here is all that minutes of public hearing for variation order number one, zero, zero, nine, dot two. Help the council, favorite city hall, house, and that will, a Monday, September twenty sixth, twenty two, get off the circular, industry. Any other comments? See, not called for the first, all will be there. Oh, I hope you have a first, you're all in favor. Five point two is a doctor minister, regular meeting of council, September twenty sixth, twenty. Resolution two zero two two, one, seven, seven, moved by. Constable Colver, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lumber. Here is all that the minutes of the regular meeting, the council, the council, favorite city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, a Monday, September twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty two, be adopted as security. Great. Any other comments? All for the first, and all for the paper.
All right.
Five point three is a doctor minister, meeting all, here, third. Resolution two zero two two, one, seventy, by Council, Ellisburg, second by Council. Here is all that the minutes of the regular meeting of council, of council chambers, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, a Monday, October thirty, two thousand, but you'll be adopted this year.
Okay.
Any other comments? Open question, all in favor? Carrie. Extra move into resolutions. Resolution six, what is the resolution? Resolution six, what is the resolution number for variation order number one zero one zero dot twenty two thirteen fifteen, Stanford Bay? Resolution number two zero two one seven nine, moved by Deputy Mayor Lundberg, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Drew. Whereas the city of Thompson is in receipt of variation order application number one zero one zero two two dot fifteen dash fifteen, Stanford Bay. Or block one eighty, one, eight fifty six, K L, bill, renovation for Paul. Construction of the accessibility ramp reduced the side yard requirements from sixteen to four point two five. Reducing the front yard, apartment to forty five people, every point three each, and reducing the apartment's, the parking, from three spaces to two spaces. And the residential density zone are dash ending. And whereas, under the provisions of the planning act, public hearing has been helped. To do representation, holding a quarter against variation order. Therefore, we, we saw the council, who variation order number one zero one zero, actually to the fifteen, fifteen, Stanford Bay. What is Miss Graham?
Yes, again, uh, resolution does, with this very sharp application for the broad, thirteen fifteen, Stanford Bay. Again, looking inside their, like, our, 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 our actions for sixty to forty five side yard. Where, going by, what we bought, and, yeah, with that coming down, a little bit, we buy that in tax parting. I think it's three spaces, two spaces. I'm just sure, it's anything, matter of policy, um, better hard solution, almost two and one prize. There's gonna be apple, a market, facilities, and other. Uh, this, uh, very short, hasn't started, uh, I have to know, I received, uh, state of the public hearings. So, we're gonna see, uh, the, the, and, 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 and.
Better June, very.
Thank you, uh, thank you, that's just. Thank you very much, uh, and, and, insisting the same with, uh, our strategic plan, from twenty nineteen, twenty two. I'll hold that with ten documents, that they will, that they will. Thank you, uh, picture. There was my variation for accessibility. I don't know, there's some variations. There's a, there's a.
Uh, I'll try to help you.
Uh, I'm gonna be spring this night also. I'm gonna comment to it, saying, you can see that the city, the work of all the others to make this work. With more chip, I appreciate the branch, such a need in our community, and identifying the need in this mayor council. I'm kind of, that one organization in the last few months. Um, that I can get that accessibility is forefront. Uh, I can hope that organization keep that serious by seeing this, to make the work, to make it work. I also see the fact that, oh, we really moved inside. As um, kind of it's everything. The building is what buildings are on vaccine. And the fact that it's quite obvious with traditional housing thing with your clients that. That they're. You know, some little other organization that they're giving a lot of you to track. Even though you think that or is that the rule is like, thank you for identifying that. My will is for this thing.
Oscar Oscar.
Um, there's probably one of these research support. I have uh, uh, worked a lot with the uh, the Boston House of Glass to your science development and disability. And I recommend you that you talk forward to. I ran in the millions of like mission, hope that more is possible, look at doing the same. I have had a lot of conversations with last few years with this matter, it's not all the grants, it's sidewalks, you name it. And so I will get up there with all the relief. Thank you for coming and then our big issues of the part not repairing and stuff. And I will get to the part and stop they can't go to the back. There's one man, so actually going for a revision and they did.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oscar one.
Just a one more. In addition to the situation. So right now, I feel like. The parking that we change the way part of this. And then we did. To the colleague in the West.
Yeah, instead of having a free spot and a probationary. In a space. We've got a so this my question, then I've been the thought to make changes. Why you to make that change? For the person just like. The change. To get who would have changed the parallel by the country. They can use this. So we have time for you to make their changes. It will be based on instruction. But you can now go ahead and out right now. We have to build practice. So there is we have a change.
So once the project start to build, the building inspector. So part of the product. It goes with the product sometimes for building starting with water and they change. Okay.
Um, I'm really excited to see this. I know I've been over there visiting. Some of the folks with her and I've got them often sometimes and. I've heard some have ever seen another vehicle parked there by drops something. And with the buildings and that it will be the car and so. Uh, this was actually, uh, you know, very innovative before the news coming forward, getting one of these projects. Uh, even before the new safety of the strategy, it didn't make plan. And definitely not so bad a situation of our our privacy and homeless population. So thank you very much for your schools. And I will. See no more comments, all good question, all those in favor.
All right.
Six point two. Condition use number zero zero dash twenty one three seven they also. Resolution to do that making by Councilor Wong, second by Councilor Cooper. But the city of Thompson is received, is it received for conditional use application. And reserve server that point we brought to plan. Who will modify the number three seven thousand. But a lot accessory for a date is neutral use within the. Uh, now happen. So. And whereas our commission of the planning act of the year has been dealt here. For that period for atmospheric gas or getting neutral use. Therefore, we are resolved that the council. Conditional use application of the director who died. Law in twenty five water here came by personal. So a lot of accessory as a neutral use. Ministry.
So now this uh, this uh, problem that is uh, we can use. So that. That you uh, that they're used. Uh, this is the category that other. Uh, we love us to. Again, this is where I was asked. Yeah, except for my meeting basically a lot. You're part of the ability still use a lot. Uh, like you know, we got pretty exciting, we were over there and then was our last call. There's. Actually, this is the uh, this is the use. That's how this is very good. Making the shoulders with it right now. So. It was a lot of the current. Uh, initially. There's a new challenge for security. Your voice for you this evening.
Thank you. Oscar one is looking very hot.
Nothing crazy at all. This is the administration because of. So long the building on that property, so really was a new bone.
Yes, the second surface allowed it was uh, property that was on so could be affected.
Negative effect.
Like. Yeah, it would be no building. Um. Maybe it's somewhere.
Any other comments?
Six point three is a resolution supporting this option of the driver. Submitting a grant to our local and supporting community non-small capital management. And special. Resolution to zero two two one eight one. Look by concert for something. Here is all the most important by word. Which is the intent for the purpose activities of a mother. That the party located in eighteen Houston, which is setting a concept and test. That we expect the organization will continue its agenda. The purpose of theory of these five years. And the expected. Some patients they for the. Project. And is making our application not as for a whole career and for grant under our whole career of support community. For the amount of one hundred thirty thirty thousand dollars. For the first purpose of creating the eating here being small artists and build a plant that you can start again in the state. And therefore, given the city of Thompson here in perfect and giving consent to work. Also, Jane in the application, city of Thompson, he has full on application. From the level of the project and he will use the provincial government will not be responsible for any further national assistance. Other than.
Yes, the uh. Our culture and support community fund that well is open to any other organization, other small. City is open. Uh, talking about is decided in an application and where as the city of Thompson possibly requires council permissions. You have a resolution. So really this is uh, put about keeping. Official. This red application within or a signal.
Uh, to the board, any comments?
Oh. I support this. Any support that are going to get to get. The taxpayers. The twelve within. What the. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Oscar one. I'm gonna be supporting this. I am happy to see that I've been pushing this our. To many organizations that we see lots of. Really important to different organizations in our community, especially for libraries. Library things get very important to all. And this helps us with our operating to get funds from the library. So. I'm surprised to be greeted by.
Thank you, Mary.
That was just. Which we did this. Right. I have a lot of accessories like. The emissions system. I just care the most personally. Well, I said it was. Part of the period. Changes where else the city. Over. Oh. And we have problems like this. Works a little. Uh, and like for the air possibly trying working for passion. I mean, it's true. Should be great. Problem that's. Appreciate that. Next.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Uh, yes, I'm very happy to see this. For the library, it's going to make that we've seen for the last few years. Uh, our community is we recognize as uh. Uh, people and we appreciate any of the new business. And the for honor also was proven to be a very good one. Anything has. Instead of the uh, well. For. Right. Six point four. Is a resolution endorsing. Now, all came as this committee was checking the naturalness of the situation. Solution to the two point two by deputy mayor. Second by council group. As the association of naturalness counties is provided by the American citizens and citizens and amount of COVID. And whereas the annual AMM election will never convert. Twenty twenty two. AMM will be having an executive media election for a president empty weight. And whereas a terminal office or president and vice president is to hear. Therefore, we are resolved the council of the city of Thompson, worst council battle and a motorized.
Yes, so it is a localization for all these towns. Um, as this. No, but they have executive board. Which is. In location numbers. Um, this is certainly. Um, and. Right just that. Um, we check the time much with AMM. Cause all AMM is for third by last. Or cars cancel the. Fire. So that's why I have this point. Um. For anyone who's.
Thank you. I thank you, Mary.
Let me spread this. Appreciate. Well, we expect that. And speaking of the social chance. Uh, the. Being. Association. You know, the rule on that board is. Representing in the work. Always always watch. On the very. Side of the evolution. We can help here. And the. Of this. Care and resolution. With order and.
Call you a word.
Um, yeah, thanks, but I'm mayor. Um, I I'll be supporting uh, this tonight and I I'd just like to say, I think that councillor Valentino does a tremendous job networking with. Leadership from other municipalities and and networking with leaders within the provincial government as well and um. Yeah, I'd be happy to support her and wish her good luck with the uh, election. Coming in November, uh, providing that she's successful in our own municipal one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a little bit of clarity about this is how you represent the district. One two people. And I'm questioning the fight with trial as I. Kind of your that it's municipal action. So if I'm unsuccessful in forty twenty six. Then the resolution is all void. If I am successful, then you have a lot of forty first, I wanted to accept this nomination. If I did accept nomination, then I have to resume the AMM work. Campaign for three weeks meeting of convention for. So it'll be a process. Um, I just want to try to. That that kind of powerful of so. Thank you. It's the end of revolution. So I have to support it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You met mayor. Well, I don't. Uh, I shouldn't have presentation. I think it's the representation that I do. And I was surprised that AMM wasn't better. When you know. So the current. I think you don't need to spell that out to show it and type resolution. Right? So what would be even do it not knowing about those results if I think it's wrong. And what happens if the new council was someone that invested? In my division. Then I'll have that chance. Or in that for. Uh, supporting. So therefore I will not support it because I think that should be the council understand the. I'm fine and that's in that for my earlier. And that's on me and that's on this council. So therefore I will not support the resolution.
Thank you. Oscar one.
This moment of our pass over, you know, the law is the answer. Representing our. I share the same concern that the council also. These positions I have to next. So but the bylaw from the AMM is kind of to ease. Our the house by forcing the present uh. Most of these. It might not have. So I suppose. Moving the case or whatever. My brother is. So. And some are thinking. So I would like to see. Kind of make make more sense. By that. Foster. Application of this process. So. Uh, where is uh? Ask for.
Thank you. Um.
Thanks, Chris. Just a little bit of clarity. So. In November at the. Office, the. Position that we hope there and we will consult. They are announced. For. But that's where it's all. And it was the first of the two years. This was.
I think they want to make that. Most people at least on the AMM board. Where to be considered important. So they understand how it's all. And that would leave a city open for new council to have order district. And they should be at AMM maybe I should have known there and. Been doing this, but this is the. This is the. One forty four. All those in favor.
All right.
And she asked for return bullet for council. The favorite council group. Council Galapeno Councilman. There's. The A Mayor Van Mark opposed. Uh, Mr. Wong, Councilor.
On the board of my mayor. Maybe maybe you missed that. Including that's all they ran up more question. Uh, we made it up for.
Sure.
And that was important. I had a question for first person I'm certain. If I may ask, it doesn't like the goal. How they do what? Uh, tomorrow on the goal, we're just even going like that. Uh. There is some Minnesota public need of shutdown. Uh, the city has been stopped for that with some more than that. What happens now? If they didn't do a resolution and there was actually someone. That want to want from that relief for Minnesota public. What happens with that?
That's representative. Yeah.
Excellent. Um, so a lot of still going, but a lot of the process of doing those that. Have asked for their name standing. Those terms that those counties have been sort of. Things up now. There's a lot of people talking more than I thought. But I think that is still leading right up until. They think for the. But a lot of people are in this.
Uh, anybody else. Of the former.
As. Definitely. So. Our representation. Or we have the option. And we.
No, this. Vice President position. Is the step here for the entire office. For all the refers that are in this council. So then we would have a week for. And more than that is like what I am now, you would have a whole week for the new mayor and council. But the vice president position represents all hundred thirty seven.
Uh. So. You're not. You're. Well, we want to. For cops. So if we shut some younger. Find the exact. We can't want to represent people cops in that situation. So. I think we should make that in the title. We can let people do today. Then we can update our list for. Good God. Thank you.
I just as past. Two point five. Resolution to improve the sole for a service contract design. Resolution to zero two one three by deputy mayor. Mark second by. Councilor. Here is all the council consulting of the three year service contract asylum. And costs not exceed sixty thousand four hundred seventy two dollars for the forty nine thousand. Four hundred and sixteen dollars plus applicable taxes. Um, was administered.
This is our annual presenting program where all our stations popping out within. Um, apart that state has or will be. Obviously, we add the for uh, some room. I should basically that uh, was already. Uh, with a friction with the. Supply and meaning of the advantage for managers. Uh, stated often is whenever for a year fetching this. Uh, your service is sixty thousand four hundred seventy dollars. Or if you're added uh, somebody that uh, so you will see. All of that. Contact is. Uh, one. But we already went. Like the. It's a. Poverty by the borders.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah. Thank you for the. Certain thing. The three years are attracted. The environment right now. I'd say. They go. Something that's. And. The. All the stations. Um, I passed. So is this. Most of the most three that they are like. Totally. I know there's the. Getting the. Or having. Full store. Materials. Were. There. Uh, having a. I um. I heard what these uh. Some of us. We out. And it's taken in three to six months. And that was the fourth of it. So. And I realized it's a service contract. But I will do the set of our staff. Over the shoulders of the. Their experience. So. On that after especially with our uh, uh, three soft words. Uh, our. Um. Yeah, I have started the this way three year deal. Um, and with me to be better for. We face that. With me just creates uh, everything changing motion. Very well. So then thank you for.
Oscar.
Thank you, Matt. But this last couple of confused. Do you mean more your outright free let station inspection, the discount would decide on. To one year. Does that mean we didn't get. From people next to the. Well, why is that? This should have been included. Now certainly the explanation should be good because. For a year, which has nothing to do with the course of where it is next three. You know, probably in my life, something chicken, whatever music comes down. If you have multiple years. This will look like another I see that or understand that. I just wondered why we would not have included the cost for one year. Possible with. Uh, we go back and outside on. I'm watching before this issue we provided to council. The discount. Maybe it was. Uh, or by the. By the justice spirit. Uh, but it was. In that way. Or discussing. By the end of this month. I think in in that is worth so. And well. Maybe I am. If I do correctly, they would do. I'm not mixing the. They want to do an extra twenty five hundred dollars on top of the fourteen. As soon as they're. Then it should have been. The same. So that would make sense. Would make sense if you add the twenty five hundred or more than sixty, was that good? Yeah, but that's not the information of the writer. And I was basing my. What's. So. Thank you.
Any others? I think all those. Oscar.
And again to our meeting this. I would just like to remind you regarding that. Being the boss, not to say you're bad. Into the hoping of. Hey. Our. Um, partners. The. Issues. They. For. And now. You know.
Or the thing that's. Narrow.
Oh, it's a cat of the. State. We make more. There.